This meeting in the Caldwell County Board of Education for September the 12th, 2022 is called to order. We're happy that you are here with us this evening. We're enjoying a good beginning to the school year and we hope that all the young people here that are in schools are enjoying their year so far. If you're in a traditional school, like today was the 10th day of school, and it's starting to feel a little bit like school here in less than two weeks, we're going to be in the fall, the fall period of time. Next thing on our agenda is the invocation, invocation for the board. So let me, I'm going to be doing that. Today is September the 12th. We know what yesterday was. It was the 21st year since, since that fateful day. It is one of those red letter days that you remember exactly where you were and what you were doing. It's much like when John Kennedy was assassinated. Now, some of you that are young may not remember that, but when he was assassinated, when Robert Kennedy, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the Challenger explosion that took place in 1986, those are red letter days that we remember. And certainly, September 11, 2001 is one of those. Many people were affected. There was something in the neighborhood, I think, just under 3,000 people that were killed in New York City, in Washington DC, and in the countryside of Pennsylvania. Needless to say, this has changed us. This has changed the world. A lot of families have been forever involved with this, losing family members. So let's remember all the families as well as the first responders that put their lives on the line as they went in the buildings and did all they could to save as many people as they possibly could. And we also want to remember here at the early stages of the school year, we want to remember all of the people that make our education here in Caldwell County great. Our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff members, our administrators, all the people here at the Education Center. It's a team effort and we need to keep all of those in our thoughts and prayers each day. If you will join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We will move along with the agenda. The next thing on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. And today we have Jackson Rogers, his mother and father is Erin and Matt Rogers. So Jackson, if you'll come right up here and lead us in this, we surely would appreciate it. And this is?
Addison Rogers.
Addison Rogers, the sister. Very good. Glad you're here. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Addison. Thank you, Jackson. Appreciate y'all being with us this evening. Next thing is approval of the agenda. The board's had an opportunity to review the agenda. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we need to approve our minutes from two previous meetings. That would be the work session meeting that we had on August the 2nd and the regular board meeting that took place on August the 8th. So do I hear a motion that we approve the Board of Education meetings? That would be items 3B through 3C.
I move that we approve items 3B through 3C and the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. Okay, next, we're, let me just make one announcement. We have, as you can tell, we do have a quorum here, but we have a few board members that are out of town. So just wanted to mention that. I want to recognize Mrs. Ann Edwards to give some announcements at this point.
Chairman Penne, it's my pleasure to make the following announcements on behalf of our board. And those will include, we are scheduled to do school tours on September the 29th. We leave at 8:00 and we think we'll be finished by about half day. And schools we'll be visiting on the 29th are as follows. Whittanaw Elementary, Valmade, Horizons, Casa, and the Early College High School. In addition to that, I want to announce your next, excuse me, board work session is scheduled for October the 4th. We meet at 8 o'clock AM for that. And our board meeting a month from now is on October 10th at 6 o'clock. One other very happy event that I'm pleased to announce is that we will have a ribbon cutting for the new Granite Falls Middle School. And that has been something that this board has worked very long and hard on, actually as long as I've been on the board. It's been a long time coming. And we did get to go down and tour the school recently and so much good work has occurred there. And it's a beautiful facility and perhaps those of you who are here in the county would also like to attend. And the ribbon cutting will be at Granite Falls Middle School, October the 4th at size 3.
Thank you, Chairman Penne.
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards. Dr. Phipps, you have some additional announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to share that we had an opening convocation for our faculty and staff. We did that back on August the 24th. It's really like a pep rally for faculty and staff members. We have so many that we can't get over at the civic center in one meeting, so we did a morning and we did an afternoon session. And I want the public to know that the energy level among faculty and staff was as high as I've ever seen it and the level of positivity was tremendous. And part of that, it's the first time we've had an opportunity to get together face to face in a couple of years and we really miss that and we had that opportunity. And I think that excitement, that enthusiasm spilled over into the start of school. As Chairman mentioned, we started with our traditional schools on the 29th. We've had a good opening. We always ask folks to be tolerant and patient as we try to work out bus routes that first week. I wanted the public to know that we've got 750 students riding buses this year more than we had last year. And we never know what we've got until school starts and we find out what we're dealing with. So I always tell folks, if you can give us till Labor Day, we get past Labor Day, then things settle down. And we certainly hope that we're at that point. And then today, I opened the day up in Raleigh at the Department of Public Instruction. I've been asked to sit in on some comprehensive work that hopefully is going to be done. And it's about accountability reform in North Carolina to the point of us pushing for the state to look at a different accountability model and not focus on EOC and EOG tests as the only way to look at how well a student, a teacher, or a school performed. So we'll keep you up to date on that. I left there a little bit early to make sure that I got back for this meeting, but it's exciting that we have that conversation happening now in real time. We had two members of the General Assembly that were there in the meeting and a number of folks from DPI and then across North Carolina. So we'll keep you posted. Fingers crossed that we can make some true reform work happen in that particular area in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phipps. As many of you probably know, we evaluate the superintendent every year. And the board has been going through that process and we have concluded with that process, have also met with the superintendent. And I'm going to read just a few things that in each evaluation that the board members wrote about Dr. Phipps. "Dr. Phipps is an innovative educational leader at the local, regional, and state levels. He cares about our students, our employees, our families, and the future of Caldwell County. Dr. Phipps leads by example. He wants and works to make students prepared for whatever they choose to do in life once they leave Caldwell County Schools. Dr. Phipps understands all aspects of leadership, including but not limited to finance, strategic implications, psychology, and the needs of every student. Good morale in any organization involves faith in the man at the top. Dr. Phipps collaborates with all community leaders at all levels of government. He works tirelessly and possesses deep compassion for all students and staff. Dr. Phipps effectively and consistently communicates with school board members to provide pertinent information. He provides leadership opportunities for principal development and administrative enhancement. Dr. Phipps' global view of the entire system is nothing short of amazing. He also has a great vision into the future and areas that might become issues in the future. Through his work ethic, guidance, and professional approach, Dr. Phipps is devoted to making Caldwell County Schools the best in the state. He provides encouragement and has a very positive attitude in dealing with administrators, teachers, staff, students, parents, and the board. We are very fortunate to have Dr. Phipps as our superintendent." So those are a few. There were many others, very positive statements about Dr. Phipps. And indeed, we are blessed to have you here in Caldwell County. Dr. Phipps, you have done a magnificent job and you've just got, what, about 10 or 12 more years to go, at least?
It's an honor to serve. I appreciate this kind of orders. Thank you.
Okay, we will move along in the agenda and we have a presentation that is going to be given by our board attorney, Destin Hall. So Destin, if you want to take the podium there?
Dr. Phipps and board members, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present the Order of Longleaf Pine to my friend, Dr. Jeff Church. Of course, we all know how prestigious of an honor this is in North Carolina. It was established back in 1963 to recognize individuals who have demonstrated exemplary service to the state. Some of the prior recipients over the last six decades were folks like Billy Graham, Michael Jordan, and Richard Petty. And tonight, our friend and colleague, Dr. Jeff Church, will join this prestigious group. Dr. Church received his Bachelor of Science degree from App State. He got a Master's of Arts from Gardner Webb along with his doctorate at Gardner Webb. And then he gave over 32 years of exemplary service to the Caldwell County Schools, starting as a teacher before going on to be the principal of several schools and finally ending up as the Assistant Superintendent of Auxiliary Services for about 14 years. And it was during that time that I got a chance to work alongside Dr. Church, at least weekly and sometimes daily, dealing with just about anything that you can think of and some things that you probably can't think of as well. With buildings, air conditioner, buses, driver's ed, you name it, we dealt with it. And I can say that I always found him to be competent, calm, and a steady hand, which is what you need in that job. And it's folks just like Dr. Church who have made and continue to make the Caldwell County School System the best school system in the state. So with that said, Dr. Church, it's my honor to present to you the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 Chairman Penne, thank you. And Vice Chairman Branch, board members, Dr. Phipps. So may I say congratulations to Dr. Church. It was a true honor working with you with many years. He was always so positive and just always inspiring and had the best attitude. So you always gave me encouragement. So thank you and the best to you. I know you're, you look happy and you're doing another service for Caldwell County. So thank you. We have some honors and recognitions this evening for one particular group. So we are very proud to highlight the Warrior Livestock Team. That sounds exciting, doesn't it? We couldn't have said that three years ago, but now we can say that. So I'm going to give you a little bit of a history. Last semester, Michaela White, and she is the horticulture and the animal science teacher, and Matt King, who is in carpentry, he's the carpentry teacher at West Caldwell High School. They together have been kind of a dynamic duo in building this program at West Caldwell High School. They reached out to the middle schools that fed West Caldwell to see if there was any interest in students participating on a livestock show team. The hopes in reaching out to the middle schools was to get students interested in FFA, Future Farmers of America, and agriculture classes before they got to high school. We also reached, or they also reached out to Carolina Farm Credit in Lenore and they agreed to help them get this program up and running. So they're also building partnerships in the community. Carolina Farm Credit sponsored one goat. They didn't bring the goats with them. And the other five were purchased with fundraiser money from the livestock team. Career technical education has also helped in purchasing show supplies. Warrior Livestock Team currently has six students. They're a part of the show team. They have four high school students, and this was a little surprising to me, they are reaching students who will be going through West Caldwell High School District. They also have a 7th grade student from Collettsville and a kindergarten student from Gamewell Elementary School. These six students are participating in the Catawba Valley Showmanship Circuit this fall and are hoping to represent West Caldwell with some showmanship champions. These students practiced three days a week for two hours this summer and started their show season in August, just before school started. The team members log in an additional two hours a week with their goat each week. So they're serious about being part of this livestock team. Since school has started back and students get to work with the animals daily in class, there is a heightened interest in the Warrior Livestock Team. Next year, they anticipate doubling the student participation. So I know you've heard when you go out and visit West Caldwell High School, the number of students who are interested now in animal science and horticulture. And we can think, I want them to come up now, Michaela White, our horticulture and animal science teacher, and also Matt King, our carpentry teacher. So let's get them up here. So Michaela had sent me a paragraph of what skills and responsibilities they have learned. So I just want you to say in your own words, Michaela, before I recognize some of their accomplishments already, what skills and responsibilities do you think they learned by being part of the Warrior Livestock Team?
So I asked all the kids today, we had practice, that's why we skirted in here, right before the meeting started, we had practice today. So when I was at practice, we asked them what they learned so far from being a part of the team. And they all agreed that they learned some responsibility. Several of them live on farms, some of them do not. So they've learned that caring for animals is a lot of work and getting these goats to do what they want them to do in the showroom is also a lot of work. You've got to work with the animals a lot every day, the same way, to get those animals accustomed to what they're supposed to do. So they've learned responsibility and accountability. They've learned that when they sign up to feed the animals on the weekends, they fed them over the summer, in the mornings and the evenings, when they sign up to feed the other five people that are on the team. And we are depending on them to follow through with their sign up that they did, that they're going to feed the animals. So these six young ones right here, they have fed the goats twice a day since we got them back in April. They have fed them twice a day. Now that school's started back, my classes have taken over the morning feedings, but they still feed in the evenings. Now granted, we don't leave until later in the evenings, but I don't go up there and feed in the evenings. It's on them. So they've got a lot of responsibility on them and they've done a great job with it. So we're very proud of them.
And they've done a lot in such a short period of time. It's pretty extraordinary. So we have lots of certificates, but they only go to this group of six. And I'm going to get started. So as I call your name, please come forward and you'll get a certificate from the Board of Education and a nice medallion. We're going to start with senior at West Caldwell High School. And also is Dr. Griffin here, Dr. Todd Griffin. Please come up, because this is your team.
I was just going to take this.
We know how proud you are of this team. So if you want to get over there beside Michaela, we want you to be a part of this team. So Tori Davis is a senior at West Caldwell High School. She was seventh at Catawba Valley Prospects Lamb and Goat Show, third at 3T Livestock Show, third in Showmanship, and fourth in Market at Hickory American Legion Fair. And Tori said, "Working with animals takes a lot of patience and training." She said, "You have to put in a lot of hard work and be consistent in order to get your goat trained and get them to perform well in the ring." So you're learning that at an early age, aren't you? Okay, we have Jocelyn Wallace. And Jocelyn is, is that right?
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn?
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn, okay, I'm sorry, Jocelyn. So Jocelyn. Jocelyn Wallace is a senior at West Caldwell High School. Thank you for that. Fifth at McDowell County Fair and seventh at 3T Livestock Show. Jocelyn said, "Hard work in leadership. You are not only working for yourself, but you are working for your goat as well. You learn valuable communication skills because you have to communicate with the judge in the ring and you have to maintain eye contact. Teamwork is also important because you have to be willing to step up and help when issues arise for other teammates." So congratulations to Jocelyn. Okay, we have Jacob Beard, freshman, 9th grade at West Caldwell High School. First in Showmanship, fourth in Market at Cabarrus Roundup, fourth at McDowell County Fair, third at 3T Livestock Show. And Jacob says, "Being responsible for an animal is a lot of work. Being a part of this team is more than being responsible for just one goat. You have to share the responsibility of caring for the team's goats and not letting your teammates down." So what an excellent attitude to have. Jacob, did I? Oh, Jacob Bird. Jacob Bird. (laughing) Jacob Bird. Okay. Brody King. Brody is a kindergarten student at Gamewell Elementary School. Wow! Brody has already been fourth at Catawba Valley Prospects Lamb and Goat Show, first in Showmanship, and third in Market at Cabarrus Roundup, fourth at 3T Livestock Show, first Showmanship, and second in Market at Hickory American Legion Fair. Wow, that's a lot of awards already. So Brody says, okay, Brody said, "I've learned a lot about raising goats. I've learned what animals eat and what different parts of the goat are called. I've learned to keep eye contact with the judge and be quiet in the ring." That's important, isn't it? "I also learned how to talk to the judges and cheer on my teammates. I really want the team to win big ribbons." And they are. So congratulations. Next, we have Miley Teague, 7th grade, Collettsville School. So here's our middle schooler. And Jill Pippin is her principal. Jill, you want to come up and join us too? You can't just take pictures? So Miley is fifth at McDowell County Fair, third at 3T Livestock Show, fifth in Showmanship, and first in Market at Hickory American Legion Fair. And Miley says, "Showing is a lot of fun, but it is a lot of work as well. Showing goats requires more than just working with the animals. You have to learn anatomy about the goats as well." So it's a science lesson too, isn't it? So congratulations. Okay, is that it?
Jacob Story.
Jacob Story. Okay. We're not going to forget about you, Jacob. Come on up. We save the best for last, didn't we? Jacob Story. Jacob Story actually does have a lot of ribbons. So he's the big guy. Okay. Jacob Story, third at Cabarrus Roundup, sixth at McDowell County Fair, fourth at 3T Livestock Show, second and reserve grand champion in Showmanship, and first in Market at Hickory American Legion Fair. So that is a long list, Jacob. And let me see what Jacob says here. "Being responsible for an animal is a lot of work. Being a part of this team is more than being responsible for just one goat. You have to share the responsibility of caring for the team's goats and not letting your teammates down." So we've heard that common thread throughout about not just caring for their goat, but you're teaching them about teamwork as well. So we are very proud of you, Jacob. And I know the board is too. I know the board is very proud of that.
(inaudible)
Let's, let's, everybody who wants to get a picture. Moms and dads and grandmas.
(inaudible)
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 That's a nice looking group. It's just such a handsome group. And I love the T-shirts. You want to turn around and show the back of your T-shirt too, to the audience? North Carolina Proud. There they are. There they are. The Warrior Livestock. Let's give this livestock team. We never expected to have so many ribbons this early. So you are off to fantastic stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown, and thank you to all the team members and the advisors, the teachers there. It's quite an honor, and we love going out and seeing what's going on out there in the agriculture and agribusiness taking place at West Caldwell. So great job. Next thing on our agenda, and as we're going to be getting into the business part of the agenda, this would be an appropriate time if you choose to leave. And we're just pleased that you are here with us this evening. And again, congratulations to all of you. Okay, we're going to continue along with the agenda, and I'd like to call on Assistant Superintendent Dr. Bill Griffin.
Good evening, Chairman Pennell, Vice Chair Branch, members of the Board. Dr. Phipps has a couple items here for you this evening. The first is Subject A, Human Resources Usual and Customary Informational Items. Those are for your information only and require no action at this time. B, Human Resources Usual and Customary Action Items. These are contracts. Respectfully request, Human Resources Usual and Customary Action Items for approval as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Human Resources Services Usual and Customary Action Items as it relates to contracts?
I move that we approve the contracts as presented.
Okay. Is any comments? Those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Subject C, Human Resources Usual and Customary Personnel Action Item. These are our substitute list. Respectfully request, motion to approve the Human Resources Usual and Customary Personnel Action Items as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Usual and Customary Personnel Items as presented by Dr. Griffin?
I move that we approve the Customary Personnel Items and the Substitute List as presented.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. And finally, Subject D, September Board Transfers for the School Year 2022-23. Total transfers requested are 53. Transfers recommended Board Approval are 48. Transfers not recommending Board Approval were five, and total Board Approved Transfers for the 2022-23 School Year is 1,518. Transfers revoked zero, and total transfers revoked total of zero. Respectfully request, a motion to approve the September Board Transfers for 2022-23 as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the September Board Transfers for 2022-23?
I move that we approve the student transfers as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Next, I'd like to call on our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, and that is Mr. David Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Dr. Phipps. I have two things tonight. First of all, is the Strategic Payment Services Contract that we reviewed during the last work session, like for approval of contract as submitted.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Strategic Payment Services Contract as presented by Mr. Johnson?
And these would be on the changes based on the recommendation of our council.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve?
Chairman Pennell, I move that we approve the Strategic Payment Services Agreement as it's been presented and discussed by Mr. Johnson.
Is there a second? Any comments, questions?
Could you explain to the people what that is?
Yeah, I'd be glad to try. It's a Strategic Payment Services is a company that contracts with governmental agencies to provide basically a rebate program back for a virtual card. They did an analysis with our school system, and they have found that based on the certain vendors, they actually look at each vendor we pay. Then they do an analysis and say if we continue that amount of business roughly with these vendors, these vendors are the ones that we can take the virtual payment card for, and they provide us back a rebate. And on the low end, it should be somewhere in the $35,000 to $40,000 range. I had mentioned to the Board that I'm always looking for a way to get additional revenue for our district. And this was something, hopefully, we can take advantage of, and it turns out well.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Okay. I also have the Budget Resolution for 2022-2023. We went over that also in detail at the work session with some charts and some different things. I am going to cover the numbers here from state through our wraparound program. So for state, the total budget for Fund One, $79,981,132. For our current expense fund, Fund Two, $17,759,94. For Fund Eight, our Special Grants Fund, $5,912,212. For Fund Three, which would be our Federal Grants Fund, $21,422,626. For Fund Four, which is our Capital Outlay Program, $6,964,639. We have two enterprise funds, our Child Nutrition Fund and our Wraparound Fund, our Wraparound Program. Those two enterprise funds, $7,040,388 for the Child Nutrition, and Wraparounds budget at $3,281,600. These do include matching revenues for the expenditures, so it will be a balanced budget. The budget that's presented totals $142,361,691, which is down roughly $9 million compared to last year. And I want to tell you why, to get the comparison. One reason, our state funding is actually up to cover a lot of the salary increases and retirement rate and things like that. They went up. However, our federal and capital is down. Two reasons for that. One, our S or Grants Funds are about halfway through. So we're on track to have those about spent halfway. So we're on track for that. And also, Capital Outlay, Ms. Edwards mentioned that October the 4th, we have a ribbon cutting. So we're having a ribbon cutting. We don't need as much capital outlay to finish the Granite Falls Middle Building Project. So capital and federal funds are down about $9 million. Would be my request that the Budget Resolution be approved as presented.
Do I hear a motion that the Board approve the Budget Resolution as presented by Mr. Johnson?
I move that we approve the Budget Resolution as presented.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Next, the Board will be going into closed session. Do I hear a motion that the Board go into closed session?
Chairman Pennell, I move that we convene to closed session pursuant to the statutes listed on our current agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We will be going into closed session, and it is expected that we will have some action, an action item once we come back. So if you choose to stay, great. Otherwise, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Do I have any objection? The next item, the contract approval, will be removed. There's going to be a change or so that needs to be made. So with no objection, that will be dealt with at our next meeting. That being the case, do I hear a motion? We adjourn.
I should adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.